Call this meeting to order. FM County Planning Board Workshop, May fourteenth. Welcome everyone. We'll just word of prayer and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this time. We can come together and discuss these rules and regulations of FM County. Lord, we just asked you would help us to think about these changes and make smart changes for everybody's sake in FM County. And just be with us, keep us safe, be with our president and our troops to keep us safe. In Jesus's name, amen.
All right, it's a minute. Let's see agenda. Who's got the agenda?
Item one has been withdrawn.
All right. Call for a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Second from Mr. Thompson, all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Minutes, any creation or additions? Call for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Second, Mr. Zipper, all's in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. New business. All items presented during this meeting will be presented at a future Board of Commissioners meeting as a public hearing. So item number one was withdrawn. Item number two, ordinance revision, public hearing, discussion of an amendment to the Code of Ordnances. Part two, official code, appendix B subdivisions.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So the advantage now that we have with our subdivision ordinance is that we have the county engineer here. And so it's been really nice to have his input in rewriting the ordinance and bringing it up to even greater standards than we had before. So you can see a lot of comments in here on that that both myself and Jonathan have made. But the key things, like I have in the executive summary, there's a definition of family subdivision, then minor subdivision, and then majors, anything ten lots and more.
Where are you at, Steve?
I'm just on the staff report right now.
Okay, thank you.
We don't use the word sketch plan anymore. We use the word preliminary plat. And so the process is clear. You have a preliminary plat that they bring, and then you have a final plat. Inside there is also revised application procedure. Also, it now clarifies the approval procedure. We also require, or we revise the construction plan requirement for major subdivisions. That was a lot of the holdup that we had for some subdivisions in the past. And then Jonathan has made some pretty significant changes to the infrastructure requirements, and then make sure that they're the same throughout the entire ordinance. And then we made some changes to the dedication processes for the infrastructure, which includes, you know, roads or stormwater or water and sewer. So those are the major changes that we've implemented in this version of the subdivision ordinance. So that's all written in the staff report. And then we can go through the ordinance, and you just tell me where you want to stop, okay?
Yes, sir.
So page two, page three. So page four, there's the definition of the family subdivision. To the side there, and it says, any subdivision containing one to five lots running on existing public or private street, not involving any new street or road, or extension of municipal facilities. You can read that right there. So that's what a family subdivision is now.
You on page five, three point two, three one? Is that what you're reading? Minor or your own family?
Three, yeah, I'm reading that note on the side of the column.
This note on the side.
So we're saying that note would be part of the code?
That note will be the definition of family subdivision, yes.
So why do we call it a family subdivision with one to five lots?
Because that's what normally gets approved at the commissioner level. So they say it's a family, and the ordinance currently states you can only do more than three lots. You can't do any more than three lots. They've done as much as five lots.
Well, when you put the word family in it, it makes me think that it's like...
It is family.
On my piece of property, it's my family members, and that's, we subdivided it for those. But this says any subdivision.
That's right. So family subdivision is the term that was used over the years to accommodate more than three lots. But I'm not...
I thought that was major and minor.
Nope. Nope. It's been family. It's what they said.
It used to be.
Yeah. So what you have is a policy that was different than the practice. And all we're really doing is making the policy the same as the practice. Now, it don't have to say family. It can say whatever you want it to say, but we're more interested in the five or less lots. And then we're more interested in the minor subdivision being six, seven, eight, and nine. Follow what I'm saying?
But one time, over three in a subdivision was a major subdivision.
That's correct. That's right. But it's, but that's right. But it's not. Over three is not a major subdivision, because the majority of the time, nothing was created. There was no infrastructure created. There was only a sixty-foot easement created, and there was no stormwater or anything like that.
I agree with that, but I'm just saying that's what it was.
Yeah, that's what it was. You're right. Oh, it still is.
So, we got, let's go ahead, Alan.
What?
So a family subdivision is one to five. All right, what's six to, six on up?
Six to nine, not counting the tenth one, is a minor subdivision.
Six to nine.
That's right. That's in there too.
And then ten or above is a major.
Yep. And the, and the six to nine, there could be some infrastructure, but it has to meet certain criteria. It could be a gravel road, but it's gotta be twenty feet. It's gotta have some ditches in it for stormwater. But it doesn't have to be the all-out, nice subdivision that we call a major subdivision.
So the family subdivision is basically no infrastructure?
Correct.
Septic tank well, I guess.
Septic tank, lots, depending on the zone.
No pavement, no, no anything.
Just an easement.
And then a minor subdivision is minor infrastructure, like, like what? Water and sewer or no water and sewer?
It depends on the zoning for water and sewer. They could have it. But the infrastructure is a twenty-foot road, has to be at least gravel, can't be dirt, and you have to have ditches for stormwater. And that's about it? You can have water and sewer, Alan, but that's up to whether you, what you want to do with it.
But you don't have to have water.
But you don't have to have it. That's right.
Until you get to ten.
Exactly.
So this allows the, this allows Alan, by the way, I understood it was to come in and cut, let's see, no more than four lots. He could cut, I guess, if he, if he lives on it, he could cut three more lots for his three kids.
Yep. And he could have the, so he got the parent lot, okay, and he can cut five lots off of that. If he goes over the five, then he's, is it five?
Four.
Yeah, one to five.
Yeah, one to five. And it say one to five?
But the parent lot, though, is counted as one, right?
The parent lot is, that's what I was gonna get to. The parent lot is one.
But he can cut four lots.
Because right now, the parent lot's not counted as one.
Not, okay.
And then two years from now, I got subdivided twenty acres, gotta do a family subdivision again.
Nothing says you cannot.
I, I, I mean, I know we've always called it family subdivision. If it has nothing to do with a family, I just wonder why. I, I, I mean, I know we've always called it family subdivision. If it has nothing to do with a family, I just wonder why it's called family.
I can't go out and test DNA.
Yeah, that's why, I just, like, seems like there would be, because, because somebody in the future, when none of us are in the room is gonna interpret it to mean, well, obviously they meant.
Family.
Had to be family.
That's a good point, yeah.
Right? I mean, to me, that, if we're trying to say it doesn't matter, cause I think, I was, when I was reading, I initially thought we were trying to say it had to be family, and to me, that seems like, that's unfair too, right? If I don't have family to do that.
Simple subdivision. You could use the term simple.
And, I think it's great that we're providing options. I just would worry that having the word family in there, somebody's gonna interpret it in the future to mean that.
And that's the thing. We didn't have any options except for three or you're a major subdivision. Yeah.
So what, what about the thing we review consistently when people were proposing about access off of access easements? And we, like, I know several months in a row, we had variance requests for this, off of private access easements. They still have to meet that standard? So there was already two, they can't do this family subdivision off of a private access easement?
That did not change. That's right. That is all under the criteria, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you can police it, but to me, you know, lots fronting on an existing public. I think if it fronts an existing public, you know, what Ryan said, you possibly could break that up down the, down the road. But once you divide your property up for family, or you bust it up into four lots on a private easement, that all, that almost needs to be it for the future. But I don't know how you police that, because then, you know, if the tract's large enough, then you'll just end up with more and more and more on private easements.
Well, you could cut twenty acres up into four or five acre parcels, and then two years later, you could cut the five acre parcels into four parcels.
As long as they got frontage, yeah. Or, yeah, some type of road structure.
And as long as people understand it's private, I mean, I, I don't really care. But, you know, it usually ends up with these private easements similar to them.
I didn't know.
The county to come step in and, you know, police it, but that's not fair. I mean, if you're gonna live on a private road, you're gonna live on a private road.
But we got a pile of them in the county that bought mini farms, cause they were on a dirt road. And soon as they bought them, they started lobbying for a paved road.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, they bought the lot cheap because it was on a dirt road, and then pavement, 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 and now them roads is paved. So, I don't know, I don't know the right answer.
I, I don't either. I'm just thinking and, and thinking about what we see. You know, that's always the thing, is how many more do you put on a private easement?
Well, we got places that's got twenty on it.
You do.
Correct.
You're right.
So, so I don't know how you fix.
And like I said, it's a private easement.
You just have to wait to see what happens.
If, if it's gonna be private, it's gonna be private.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not taking over the twenty-foot gravel road.
Right.
That is not gonna go into our repertoire of roads. But it gives some type of infrastructure improvement if you have more than four lots, yeah.
So I got a question here. So the scenario I laid out, there's a twenty-acre parcel. We divided it up into four or five acre tracts. We put a twenty-foot gravel road on it.
It's private.
Huh?
It's private road.
Private road, but suppose, what about when you want to divide the five acres I gave you up into four lots? What, what happens at that point? Because if we, if we allowed a twenty-foot road, and we're never gonna take the twenty-foot road over, that means we're never gonna take the roads over once it gets to be twenty houses in there.
Yeah, that's right. And then, and the homeowners will have to pay to upgrade.
So why do we allow the twenty-foot road to start with? Why don't we allow a bigger road that can be upgraded and improved? I mean, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
There are, there are places that would require you to at least allocate the easement width.
So I'll have the easement.
Things, but not, not, just not allow it off a twenty-foot.
Right, yeah, exactly.
You would have to, if you wanted to do it, it's still gotta be a sixty-foot wide easement. So if the future came.
The easement's still gonna be sixty-foot easement, like we do now.
Yeah.
But it's only, but you're gonna have to put the twenty-foot gravel down to make it a little bit, and the ditches, yeah.
Yeah.
So the sixty-foot will always be there.
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, there's certainly places that hold strict that, that we, we're just gonna allow it.
But a lot of times HOAs or the group will get together, do an assessment of themselves, and then lobby the county, and here I got this amount of money, help me bring it up to standard.
So you're saying the road, the twenty-foot road would be on a sixty-foot easement?
That's not changed, yeah.
So you would still, you would have room to widen the road?
Yes, we would.
Okay, I didn't understand.
That's okay. Yeah, we would have, yeah. Yeah, even, even the three-lot subdivision now, gotta have sixty-foot easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that. I thought when you said a twenty-foot road, that was all it was gonna be.
No, that ain't, no, no, that would never pass muster.
I mean, we don't need, we don't need.
No, we don't need to do that to ourselves, no, yeah.
I'm sure there's a lot more to go through, but the big question I had on this is like, cause there's multiple, like, there's red, there's purple, there's blue, like, there'll be a version that comes out for public consumption for the surveyors and engineering community to review and comment on?
With comments like, to the side?
No, no, just to review and understand what their new standards are gonna be.
Absolutely, but we wanted to show you.
What they may have already proposed on.
Yeah, we wanted to show you what we changed.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just think that's important. I mean, just to make sure that.
So you wanna call it something other than family? That's what I'm getting out of this.
That's just my opinion. I just, I just think it's confusing going forward fifty years from now, or whoever's reviewing it ten years from now.
You wanna call it a simple subdivision?
That's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright. Okay. Alright, page five? Nothing really there.
Well, that's the minor that you already spoke about.
Yep, that's the minor, yep.
So that red that looks like it's proposed, that talks about family.
Yeah, I'll have to change that word, family, yeah. Um, let's see.
A master plat?
And that's also in a minor's family as well, yeah.
Yeah. So a master plat. So everything's gonna be final plat, preliminary plat, master plat, okay? So if you're wanting, so everything's got the same name.
Hmm.
Instead of sketch plan, final plat, and somewhere in between thing, concept plan.
Hmm.
So all subdivisions in America go master plan, preliminary plat, and then final plat. So that's what those changes are. So if you're doing a phased subdivision,
Hmm.
we just wanna see everything upfront. Can it change? Yes. Will it change? Probably so.
So we're saying what we call a master plan now is a master plat?
Yep.
A plat's typically a surveyor document.
It can be.
But I'm not a surveyor. I can do master planning.
Yeah, you can. And we're fine with that. We didn't say it had to be made by a surveyor. Just show me what you're doing. Alright. Page seven. Clarify the, the existing subdivision. It's okay. It's not that, there's nothing drastic there. Alright, so page eight. Article four, four point one, general procedure. Everybody see that? Procedure for plat approval?
Yep.
Uh-oh, sketch plan's supposed to say, so that, number one is supposed to say the master plan?
Master plat?
Yep, master plat. Number two's preliminary plat. Number three, construction plans. So we wanna see the construction plans before final plat. Those are pretty detailed, right, Jonathan?
Which is already practice.
But we just don't have it in writing?
Yeah.
But a minor subdivision, you don't have to do anything but the final plat?
Yep. Cause most of the time, it's pretty simple.
What about the?
And the family one too.
Simple subdivision?
Yeah, simple subdivision, yeah. Final plat as well.
Or you just say the same thing with that literally say, simple and minor subdivisions will be final plat only?
Yep, final plat only, yeah. Alright, page ten. There are some changes here. We talk about the preliminary plat for a major subdivision. And we really just went through there and talked about changing it from preliminary plat from a sketch plan. And then again on page, oh, that's the same, page ten. Alright, page eleven, pretty significant change here, four point two, point three. So this is the new application procedures for the approval of construction plans. So we added construction plans to the process, and here are the procedures for the approval of that section. And it's really not, nothing that is not being done now. It's just that we had to write it down and put it in here. I don't think not nothing is the correct terminology, but.
So, what we, like, for subdivision, we'll, obviously, first step is going to be the zoning. Then they're gonna submit.
If necessary, yeah.
What's that?
If necessary.
Oh, yeah, if necessary, great, yeah. But most of the time with a bigger, a major, I think a major subdivision, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
That would obviously come to us in the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
Preliminary plat, or wait, excuse me, but master plat is coming before us?
Probably simultaneously with the zoning.
The, master plat was sketch plan?
Yep. Nope, no sketch plan. No, we don't have sketch plan anymore. Preliminary plat, yeah. So, so here's what, they'll come to you and say, I wanna rezone from AR one to R three, okay? And with that will be a master plat of what they intend it to look like. And if they want to do phase one at the same time, that will be a preliminary plat for phase one. And it will be pretty specific. It'll be stormwater, infrastructure, number of lots, that kind of stuff. That can change between final plat when they actually do the homework. If they have to delineate flood, whatever, that's what final plat will be. Yep. Keep going. You're thinking about it.
I'm just trying to figure out what the, because right now, we don't review preliminary plat, right? We don't ever see that.
And you should.
And we should?
You should.
We should.
Yep. And I'll tell you the reason why you should. Because you don't wanna see it for the first time at final plat. Do you?
But we're gonna.
I guess my answer to that would be if staff thinks it's significantly different than the master plat, then yes. But if it's just another step, just because it's a, they had to add, they had to add bearings and distances to property lot, cause that's like, the preliminary plat's gonna show a lot down to that level, obviously, right?
It is. It's gonna, it's gonna be, yeah.
You're gonna have a lot of work that's gonna take, that you, I don't think most people are gonna do that to go through a zoning. I, I mean, that would be a significant, you, you got a surveyor involved in it at that point, right?
Yeah, that's a big cost if you don't get.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Right. So I think you're gonna definitely have that.
So they're gonna come back and do preliminary, yeah.
Often, you're, most people would come back, if that's their new step. And I'm, I guess I'm fine with it. It just seems like if it wasn't a deviation, it's kinda the same way I've always felt about sketch plans.
I don't think when you.
If the sketch plan met the requirements and there's not anything that we can change, right, that, that, that's where, if it wasn't a variance request or something associated with it, and they met the requirements, I mean, I guess where I always felt like, I don't have a whole lot of, like, to stand on to ask them to do something different. Especially if it ma, it matches the master plan that they've, master plat they've already submitted.
Right.
I agree. I mean, I always have a hard time saying to somebody, I don't like the way you designed your development, but it's your piece of land. It's your development, as long as you meet all the rules. Set forth.
And our job is to get them through the process to match the ordinance. That's right. So, so if we don't bring it to you and it doesn't match, we're the ones that tell you, hey, they weren't willing to do X, Y, Z, and then you have to go from that. Cause not everything we bring you matches the ordinance. And that's where you come in.
Well, maybe that's the, that's, I don't know how it's worded and how to be the first admit. I hadn't read through all that, the red language there. But maybe that's the way it's worded, that staff or the county has the option to send preliminary plat for anything, but it's not necessarily required. I know Savannah does that with general development plans, which is a similar thing. Like, if it's super controversial, even if it meets all the requirements, they can choose to send it to the NBC or whatever, just because they feel like it needs and justifies it. But it also frees up to not have every, I mean, they would never get out of that meeting with all the reviews and things that they'd have to do, so.
They would not, yeah, right, yeah.
I'm not saying we're there yet. I just, again, I, I just hate to add, cause every submittal is at least a two to three month process probably, but by the time you get back in the system for things like, especially if it's gotta go through a public process.
Well, we can, we can be the ones that approve preliminary plat if that's what you want, as long as you see the concept or the master plat.
I mean, the Board of Commissioners may think completely different, but my feeling was that if it met the, again, I go back to the way I've always felt about the sketch plans. If it met the requirements and staff didn't have a, a variance that was identified, again, I'm just one person, but that was my thought. I, I, I've relied on staff a lot for, if it met it. I didn't feel like there was much justification for me to ask for something to change.
So, so, I mean, just to be clear, under four point one, general procedure, is still showing for a major subdivision, a sketch plan?
I know, that's what we said, we need to change that. We wrote that down, yeah.
So.
That would say preliminary plat is what it should say, yeah.
It's gonna be a, so, item number one's going away. Item number two will be, so the sketch plan will now be the preliminary plat?
It'll be master plat, preliminary plat, construction plan, final plat.
But the master plat is very detailed.
Probably not.
No?
Master plan's gonna be more of that concept plan. Hey, we're gonna do three phases. Here's what it looks like. We'll have houses over here. We'll have commercial here. And we'll have townhomes over here. I'm just making it up, yeah.
Will there be a checklist of what we expect to kinda be?
Yes. Yep.
So, and then after that, you'll have the.
Preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat.
That's where it gets down to brass tacks, yeah.
So the master plat's gonna be the sketch plan, so you, and then.
Okay.
I mean, by the time you're doing preliminary plat.
You're spending money.
You've had to really already engineer it, cause you gotta know where your storm ponds are going, the size of things, easement width. Some, you may not be, it's final, final, but, I mean, most of the time preliminary plats are requiring you to put like, a lot of information on them.
Yeah, it's not much different from the construction plans.
No, it's just that, it's, it's a preliminary, look at what the final subdivision plat's gonna look like, because nobody ever gets the final subdivision plat, the civil drawings, right? It's just the survey that creates the lots.
Yep. Because the construction plan is what Jonathan takes and does his work with, and Samantha.
Yeah.
Yep. And there, and there are a few things on there that aren't on the preliminary plat.
On the construction plan, there's a lot, all the details of how it gets built and, right, and that's all the.
The size of the intake.
Engineering side of things, but the plat's just the survey document that's recording, making the lot, right, so, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, so, uh, page.
On page eleven, all that red writing was added?
Added.
Was that all added? Okay.
Yep. They're all added. Um, so let's see, other significant. So where it says sketch plan on page seventeen, we've changed it to preliminary plat checklist.
One question. On page twelve, the green writing?
Twelve, green?
Hmm.
Yep.
Is that coming out, being put in?
That is in.
That is in?
Yep. Why do we make that green, Jonathan? You remember?
Um, the red and green, that, that would, that's, uh, I can't.
I think it was during Christmas.
Pink and blue.
Okay, just making sure.
Twelve.
I'm on page, I'm, I'm still on page eleven.
You still on page eleven?
Um, approval procedure.
Yep.
Failure to, failure of a divider to initiate any development within six months from the approval, construction plans will require resubmission of preliminary plat and construction. Of preliminary plat and construction plan to the planning and engineering department for approval unless an extension is requested, so. Some circumstance holds them out and they can't get funding or whatever it is for a while, they got to apply for an extension.
They do, right now it's a year, isn't that right, Samantha?
Yeah, right now the notice to proceed after the sketch plan expires after a year.
Well, that's the sketch plan, right, this is construction documents, right?
Yeah, those are construction plans.
Actually, we've said, we've said previously that a sketch plan that doesn't get enacted upon after a year is not valid.
We got one coming up, Buckingham Phase Three.
We just finished Buckingham Phase Three.
Yep.
Okay.
So the thing.
Who the banks don't like to know that.
But the thing with the twelve months is that we, we've probably changed the ordinance four times since then. Or we have recently, so just, you know, we need to. And I'm sure the commissioners will grant a variance on somebody that had a good cause.
So it's just bringing it back to make sure it's up to new standards, buffers, setbacks, yeah.
Well, my, reason I question that is I see a lot of projects that, um. It gets to the stage where we bid it and it takes, sometimes they don't start for nine months or a year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, we see that a lot.
But it's been, but it's been triggered, right?
Now, once, yeah, they can get an LDA, once they get an LDA, it's over with, that's, they're, they're good to go.
As long as they.
And you might be involved in that LDA with stormwater and stuff like that, right, yeah. Now, we're saying if, if, if the preliminary plat's been approved and they're doing construction plans and it's been a year since the preliminary plat or six months or whatever. They, they, they need to decide if they're gonna finish that project or not.
But it says from the approval of construction plans.
Yep, from construction plans, right. So what that means is, is construction plans is the third stage, they should already be out there building the subdivision, right?
But there's a initiate, it says initiate development, as long as they're working.
Well, that's gotta be defined.
That's gotta be defined, that's right.
Right, because if I've sent plans out to bid, did I initiate construct, uh, development, is it development or construction?
It's, it's the issuance of a permit for the LDA, the land disturbing activity. So construction plans get approved, they get a land disturbing activity, and they don't do anything for six months.
Right.
Or nine, or they get an extension, they don't do anything for twelve.
Or can't get gravel for concrete.
Right, or something like that.
I mean, seriously, that things.
Well, well, they, yeah.
As long as we have a pro.
Last couple of years, all kind of things.
Have happened, yeah, but as long as there's a process in place where they keep notifying us and we put that in open gov and send out a notice, because right now we never had that before. So now we at least have the communicate, they can, they can extend the variance as far as I'm concerned, as long as that project is still active. Meaning active, meaning it's, somebody's communicating about it. So like Buckingham Phase Three, we didn't know about it for how long, eighteen months, was it that long, Samantha?
Close to it.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't know anything about it. So we just want to know something about it.
From, from the development standpoint, is that, is that timeframe?
Most, most permits, it lasts for a year. Um, I mean, and I, I mean, I still go, go back and maybe the language is gonna change, but I mean, it's a good thing you brought up, because it does say. From the approval of the construction plans, which to me is when you're issued the permit, right?
Right.
Will require if, oh, excuse me. Failure to initiate any development within six months, so we just gotta really define what initiating development means.
Well, see, I.
So if I put my construction, if I put my construction entrance in, to me, I just initiated development and you have no way to, like, it. That it never, that permit shouldn't expire based off that language.
Right.
Just be, I mean, we just need to know what we're asking for and make sure we're clear, clearly are getting out of that what we.
Yeah, I could take my shovel out there and do some digging around, do some dirt.
Well, we, I think we need to have a definition on what.
Constitutes.
What is construction or what, what triggers it?
Or just change it to twelve months.
What triggers the guy to have to, um.
But if you're concerned as a site just sit, sitting and the permit never, I mean.
Yeah.
I still initiated, I mean, I initiated it ten years ago, right, I mean, it's initiated.
Well, Steve, I guess I just want to be clear, let's say we, we, we looking at a development and, and these are the rules and the guy goes in and he puts in. Six pieces of pipe and makes a construction entrance, so then it can sit there for five years before he does anything else?
Good point.
Realistically?
Realistically.
I'm just wanting to know.
Yeah, realistically, yeah, we don't want it to, but realistically, yeah.
But if he don't put in the driveway.
Yeah.
Then he's gotta resubmit in six months, if he lets six months go by.
Yeah.
So Alan and I went through a lot of this, um, after oh eight and ten, when they crashed, people bought. Guys that were doing the developments, lost them, I mean, they sat dormant, they did nothing, you know, nothing was going on, then new people bought them. So at that point, what set of rules are they adhering to?
They're not vested anymore, they gotta do the upgrade of rules, yeah.
So that's what you're trying to prevent, is a subdivision that got, went bankrupt five years ago.
Yep.
Um, was not basically grandfathered in on his old set of rules.
Yeah, if it changes ownership, they gotta upgrade to the new rule, that's pretty standard.
Changes ownership.
Yep.
That's what we do with Waterford.
Sold all the time.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, it should go with the piece of dirt, right?
We just, we just have one right now, today, that we just got through doing that way.
That's what happened with Waterford Apartments off Gushen Road.
Yep, just had that done too, yep.
Why, I need to understand what that means. Somebody submits for a sketch plan under one name and then it gets, it, permit gets issued and it changes to a different LLC.
Permit gets issued, that's fine, that permit is everything to us, that's a timeline for us. The permit is issued in somebody's name for LDA.
Right.
And they've gone out there and done some stuff with that, it's the subdivisions or the projects that haven't been issued any permits that change hands. They are no longer a non-conforming use, they have to conform to whatever's changed since then. That's, that's federal law, that's not me.
But I guess the question I got, and it may be insignificant, is say I got fifty acres, I want to develop my higher line to. Do my preliminary plat.
Right.
Right, and then I say, well, damn, I'm seventy, I don't think I want to do that, Dave, you want to buy it? Dave said, yeah, I'll buy it, now. The money I spent with him, I can't say, well, I already got it engineered, because now we're saying it's gotta be re-engineered.
Yeah, that don't change anything.
Yep.
Well, you just come in, you say it don't change anything.
That, I mean, that's just what's going through my head and it may not make any sense.
No, it does to me.
It does to me.
Yeah.
Because see, we see that, we see that all the time, where somebody starts the site and the next thing you know, somebody else owns the site.
So we have a, a, an ordinance that identifies what a non-conforming use is, we've had it for years. So we can bring it up and take a look at it and we can read it to you what a non-conforming use is. But typically across the country, a non-conforming use doesn't, doesn't exist anymore if it changes ownership.
Yeah, but I wouldn't ask you about, I'm saying, if I got a subdivision, I'm halfway developed it and I want to sell it, my permit should be still be active.
You're sure, yeah, you just changed the name of the permit, we've done that before.
Okay, I.
That's all.
I, I, I.
You said change ownership, though, yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought we meant like any and everything, like you can't change ownership, because.
No, 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 that's not what, I'm just talking about not, I'm saying, if, if you have a subdivision and you sell it to Dave and no permits have been issued. You've got to step up to whatever's been changed, if you have a permit issue, you're vested under those non-conforming uses.
Your plans, your zoning, your.
Yep, all that's, it's a done deal when the permit's been issued.
So you, you just gotta know those rules, that's right, going in.
Yep, now, some of them, but all over the country know those rules, some don't.
So a lot of rules to know.
Hmm, that's why we have a technical review committee meeting.
I would still propose twelve months, so six months is tight timeframe.
Then do twelve, that's fine.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
Okay, can we change it to twelve? Write that down, okay. And that's four point one, point two, is that what it was?
Uh, that was four point two, point three.
Four point two, point three, section B.
Okay.
Approval procedure.
Alright, thank you. Okay, let's go to page nineteen. Five point two, point three, proposed conditions. Number one, you've got to have your proposed road names approved prior to final plat. That's not the way it's been done recently, but that's the way we started to do it. And then number two, at least one permanent survey reference point, concrete, I'm sorry, uh, thir- nineteen.
Page nineteen.
Yep, five point two, point three, number two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, page nineteen of the PDF, I'm sorry, I'm sitting there on page nineteen of the, there's the bottom.
Uh, page nineteen of forty-three.
Okay.
See it.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay, so that number two up there under five point two, three. Somewhere on there, we want some reference points before final plat. Now, the, um, survey appraisal or appra, anyway, one of those foundations, whatever. Said that they have to have permanent markers in them anyway, so we're just quoting that that already exists. I'm not saying they have to put permanent markers in the entire subdivision, but I need some reference points, so they can't shift the lots after final plat, makes sense?
Can't shift the lots after final plat? Does that happen a lot?
And then on page twenty. We talk about the construction plans for major subdivisions and what's required. Excuse me, that goes through page twenty-one, twenty-two, and a little bit of twenty-three. So there's some significant stuff that you might want to take a look at, okay?
Uh, can I ask a question back on page nineteen to forty-three?
Mm-hmm.
So that whole section is about the preliminary plat, right, we haven't got, not a preliminary plat yet in that, if I'm following along, five point two is preliminary plat.
That, you're absolutely correct, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Um. So the preliminary plat would show the size of sewer, water mains, fire hydrants, in that stuff that's gonna be shown on the construction plans that would be associated with the preliminary plat? Are we actually asking them to show all that on the actual preliminary plat?
We are asking them to show it on the preliminary plat as well, so the point was is that we go in front of a body for approval. If you don't want it to go, because you don't see the construction plans.
Yeah.
So if you don't want to see the preliminary plat as a body, then the details could probably be less.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter, I just wanted to clarify, I was a little confused, but, because at the end of the day, you're not gonna show that on the final plat.
Nope.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, if it's not gonna be on the final plat, maybe we get rid of it.
On preliminary?
Yeah.
They just leave it on construction?
Yep.
I mean, I think all the ea, maybe the easements associated with it would start showing up, right?
Maybe, maybe just the location.
Yeah, but not, yeah, the site, I mean, I, again, I just think you won't know, I mean, it's, they're kind of going hand in hand with the design process and the engineering design process.
Right, no, yeah, that's a good, good point. Thought was it's just to have some kind of idea of what you're trying to, you know, put out there.
Yeah, and it's easily re- legible on.
That's right.
One plan, I, I just, definitely, definitely get that, it seems like the, like. That should show up in their engineering site plan that's kind of showing all of that and, granted, we won't see it, right, we would not see the construction drawings, but. I just, I'm just going like, I don't think I would, we would typically make, be making the decision based off of the size of a line or, you know, where it is even, right?
To maybe just the location showing that they've put some kind of thought.
Yeah.
Is five point three, is that the construction plan checklist?
For major.
For major?
Major subdivisions, yeah.
Because it references it, it quotes Evian County Construction Plan Checklist, I was just curious if that's what this was.
Yep.
So on thirteen, on page twenty-two, the, uh. About the density.
We're paying to.
Change.
Twenty-two.
Okay.
The density changed based off of what, like, what they showed on, I guess, on the preliminary plat?
Yeah, or the, or a PUD or a PD text, yeah.
So this means I could propose ten percent more than what the PD texts said I could do?
We do anything less than ten percent, we do in-house, anything over ten percent, we bring back to the boards. It's been that way for years.
Not PDs, though.
I was about to say, there was one that.
I mean, not, yeah, not PDs.
I had refused myself from recently, there wasn't that case.
Did I say am PDs or did I say not PDs?
You said am PDs.
Thank you for the correction.
But it was.
Samantha.
And we're just saying up, right? Like, the density's increasing by ten percent. I mean, I'm assuming we wouldn't require them to come back through.
Though, remember the six that they added?
Took two lots out, made open space and they were ten percent less.
Yeah, the six that they added in open, in Westgate, that didn't require going back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, for an example.
That makes sense, because the zoning's usually got a density that's higher than it's actually achievable.
Right.
Right, okay.
Well, if it's major and you have ten, and you reduce it down to nine, then also now I'm a minor. So, I don't know, would you want to have that go before the board again, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
No, if they get below minor, then we'll just take care of it.
Okay.
Right, I mean, we, we, well, we can go in front of them anyway, wouldn't it?
What?
The minor was gonna go in front of them, it would, yeah, I guess it would, yeah, it was still going in front of them.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's a. Problem or not.
So, um, on page twenty-six, um, where it says Article Six Required Improvements. I'm gonna let the county engineer take over on that since he had a lot to do with those changes. Um, I will tell you that probably the most significant one is, um, the requirement for a TIA, right? Out, out of all that, and then we put that in there, anything over what, fifty lots or something? We didn't?
Or, so I'm sorry, I was
Transportation Improvement Analysis Impact, now. If we didn't, we talked about it. Anyway, I'll let Jonathan go over a couple of those.
Sure, um.
That he put in there.
That I put in there?
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Yeah, so, required improvements, kinda just went through and matched what, you know, family made, minor and major. Um, and then on page twenty-seven. Uh, we're gonna have them, you know, contractors, paint the fire hydrants per what the fire department wants, um, instead of the fire department having to go out there and paint it after the fact, so, trying to, you know, fix that there before it gets handed over to us, um. And then page twenty-eight, um, we're just kinda clarifying that private roads are gonna be blue signs instead of green. Um, it shouldn't be blue, but we're just specifying that there on page twenty-eight.
And that's a standard across the state, green is public, blue is private. So, again, we're doing it, but we just wanna make sure everybody can read it.
I know this isn't the place to put it in there, but a nice required improvement in the future sure would be at some point, street trees. I just rode through four or five of the new subdivisions in the county. And it's striking how little tree canopy has gone back in any of them, so.
Yeah, that's gonna be in the community tree plan.
Yes.
Well, let's just make sure we capture when we add that as a requirement, it comes back in as it is a required improvement.
Does make a difference, doesn't it?
Yeah. Especially fifteen years from now.
Yeah, when they really matter.
Long and long.
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe they should be required, street trees, they should be in the right of way, and we should make the right of ways wide enough to have street trees between the side- the sidewalks and the, the road and traditional street trees. Engineers sometimes don't like that, because it does cause some maintenance aspects to sidewalks and curbs and stuff, but that is the traditional street tree that
So your sidewalk.
makes communities look and feel treeed.
So your sidewalk does that, but the road, it doesn't strip anything?
Yes, I call it
All depends on the species of pick.
Tree yard, tree yard or verge, or something like that, most pla- like, places that care about street trees would have that designed that way.
You just gotta pick the right tree.
And no, there's gonna be maintenance, there's no, there's no way to avoid that, but
Don't tear stuff up.
bad, or it can look terrible forever, and choose that.
Um, page twenty-nine, just kinda updating it, uh, to say that they have to get permits from GDOT, um. If it's gonna be on GDOT, you know, road or federal highway, um. I mean, that's standard, just putting it in there, that way they know, um. I think that's really about it for that, did you wanna go over final plant revisions?
Yep, please.
Check's in the mail, buddy.
Oh, you want me to, okay, that's fine, okay, we'll keep going. Asked you if you wanted to, and you said yes.
Oh, I thought, I just wanted you to go over the, um.
You wanted me to go over the, uh, the part down lower?
Yeah, just the, the design standards.
Design standards?
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay.
Design standards are up your alley, yep. So you can see, took out a lot of the ones that we already have.
Yeah, so if you go to, uh, page thirty-two. Um, that's where we talk about the, uh, Community Tree Management Ordinance, um, seven point one, point six. So we're gonna let that handle the, the tree talk. Um. And then, I had a comment about secondary entrance exit to neighborhoods shall be provided as part of the master planning. It must be developed within two years regardless of the phase, um, that way you know, I think what's happening today is, you know, there's, there's plans of a secondary entrance going in for emergency purposes, but it'll just get held out, held out, held out, this way, that secondary entrance gets put in regardless um, of whether the phase happens, you know, within, you know, six months, two years, or, you know, ten years from now, you know, that, that way it's kinda putting a little heat on them to, to put that in.
So is the secondary entrance gonna be required?
You know, it, it
We want one.
And I, I asked that question, cuz I just rode and looked today at something that's coming before us tonight, Creekside. Um, they're gonna put all, ever how many, two hundred or whatever it is, townhomes back in there, there's only one entrance.
Yeah.
Yep.
To it.
Traditionally, um, this board and the other board have not required two ways in and out unless it was an emergency exit, they had a gate over it, that they could get a fire truck in at some point in time. Um, traditionally, planners and engineers, um, have required two entrances and exits in major subdivisions, um, over fifty lots or so, um, because of, there's just so many reasons why. So Shadowbrook is a good example of how long it takes to get to the back of that in one, in one entrance only. Um, takes what, about probably four and a half minutes to get to the back of it?
Yeah, my thought was, though, when I rode through there, every morning, there's gonna be a thousand cars coming out of that one road.
Seriously, right?
And that's what's gonna happen, every morning.
Wear and tear on the road.
So if you look at, you got, when you guys approved Bull's Run over there off Thirty, that Matt Bird one? You got the entrance on the Thirty, you could've had an entrance on to Zit Row. So you could've separated, the people gonna go to Faulkville, could've gone out one way, and the people going to Rinkin could've gone out the other way, and you wouldn't have a thousand people trying to get out on Thirty.
And it changes the traffic patterns in the neighborhood, and makes the, you know, you think about the streets right in front of those houses that are right by the front of those neighborhoods, they're getting all that traffic every time, so if you had two entrances, you're cutting in half arguably.
I just think it needs to be a lot, it's standard, and it's the standard, if you exceed it, you have to provide the secondary entrance, but if our standard's fifty, by the time you do fifty-one, you have to have the secondary entrance in, as opposed to, like, the two-year timeframe. That would be my thought, but I don't know the number, right, that number of secondary access point. Uh, we just had it last month, right? Now, that was a big, you know, cost a five hundred units off of all we knew for sure was one access point, right?
That for sure, in my opinion, has gotta have a second.
Yeah. Um.
So is there, is there any kinda, a rule, or any kinda rule of thumb that when you have a certain amount of vehicles entering, or is there a access, a XL or DCL lanes to get onto the road, I mean?
That's, that's your transportation impact analysis, your TIA, yeah.
He's asking, what's that number?
Oh, what's the number?
What's the trigger?
It depends.
I think it's over a hundred, um.
Trips per day?
Trips, trips per day, you require a, a DCL lane.
So what happens if we got one lot's coming up tonight? That started out with, I don't know, a hundred or two hundred lots, and now it's gonna be four hundred lots? Do you have to come back and put the XL lane in, or?
So that's the advantage of having the master plan of the whole subdivision, and not just one section of it, so you know. At that point in time during the construction plans is when we require those DCL and, and XL, or, yeah.
So when are we gonna require the TIA?
I, I thought we had it included in here, if we didn't, it's, it's gonna go in here.
But I guess what step in the process?
Uh.
Currently, it's in construction.
It'd be before the plan, before final plat. Final plat, it'll have to show it.
I think you should reserve the right to request it, it's only there's not said it has to be, but there, there are definitely places to say, well, that's, like traffic is the most important issue on this project, we're not even gonna put it forward until you submit a TIA to us, so we all agree what the improvements are gonna be.
Okay.
I, I, it's, again, I've just added cost to somebody, and I'm not saying every project should justify it, but at the end of the day, it could do that guy trying to get the project approved, because he's got more information, it makes everybody more comfortable, and he can dispel some myths that are floating around the room about, you know, does it work or not?
Okay.
I definitely think there's a threshold, right? We gotta figure, just like I said about second access point, I don't know exactly where that number is, but
It was around fifty lots is where it was at.
Fifty's enough. I don't think, I don't, I don't think fifty's enough, I mean, I think maybe a hundred, but.
Well, we've definitely got a lot of examples of long skinny properties that were developed with neighborhood, that you would never, without having to go acquire additional properties, that would've never been developed. I, I'll say, I think the state of North Carolina is anything over a hundred, it's just statewide, has to have two points of access.
I can tell you that wasn't, that wasn't the right number.
Right, well, and then fire code, fire code for multifamily is two hundred. But that's at the fire, that's not a zoning thing, that's fire code, and that's only emergency access. Um, so it doesn't have to be a full, actually.
So I don't know if, if you can still look it up, but I, if I remember right, don't, don't quote me permanently on this. So single-family residential is nine point seven trip, nine point seven three trips a day, is that what?
Close to ten.
Something like that. So, fifty houses.
It's five hundred trips.
How many trips a day you got?
Two hundred and fifty, five hundred, excuse me, five hundred.
Five hundred.
Yeah.
That's a lot of trips a day.
Not really.
Not really, yeah.
I mean, no.
So, um.
I don't, I
Let's get it up.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it, I think, but again, to me, that's why, that's why the traffic engineers submit a TIA to, and, and not again, I don't expect us to be reviewing it and debating one way or the other, that'll be where the, the county engineer's had to review that and see if he agrees with the recommendations of it, so again, it would add time, right, but, you know, just because something's submitted at the checklist time, if it doesn't have all the information we need to make the zoning consideration, I just think it makes, for a better project. And we wouldn't have to debate it
Yeah.
at the zoning level without that information.
It could impact the number of lots too, that, I mean, cuz you're talking about moving, putting in a DCL lane, all of a sudden, you know, depending on the zoning of it.
Yeah.
I don't know, just something to think about, I think it'd be worth it.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, multifamily's only like five point three, five trips a day, so it's almost couldn't happen.
Townhomes are less, I mean, single families, definitely more, I mean, most people don't have why. Cuz, I mean, most people in a townhome probably don't have driving kids, like, a lot of times, I mean, so
Somebody stays home, or
Yeah.
Or it's single.
Or maybe retired by that point.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
That's an assumption.
But yeah, it's just, now, I mean, I, I think the commissioners have steadfastly, um, didn't want two entrances and exits, but
I mean, all we can do is make a recommendation if they don't agree with, I, I just think it would be clarity, in my opinion, is what everybody's looking for, right? And I don't, I, I don't cuz I don't know that I, like, the thing last month, like if it's just open that we're working on it, I just don't ever feel like I can get comfortable to write, to be comfortable with it. But there was a lot of things I was comfortable with about that project, so, um it may be that they gotta go acquire a second, another parcel that's expensive to get access to highway, uh, to Midland, I mean.
But Some of the conversation came with the second entrance, came with connectivity. And there was a push from the engineer at one time to connect the subdivisions.
There's, that's, there's nothing wrong with that comment either.
Well, that's a whole different conversation, that's not necessarily two entrances.
Nope. It's connectivity.
That's connectivity.
That's a whole, that's a whole different ballgame.
That's correct, so, so the conversation of connectivity and two entrances, I think, got confused, and the debate got
Those are two separate issues, yeah. But I like connectivity too. Those living in the subdivision may not, but planners do.
One subdivision's gonna like it, and the other subdivision's not.
That's wrong, sure.
That's where there needs to be a transportation plan that shows major routes, and maybe that road's built to be connected and connected and connected and connected. But, yeah, I mean, that, that, that it's a challenging thing to make them all connect.
Uh, what else you have there, um, on design standards, Mr. County Engineer?
Yeah, we, uh, did, uh, cul-de-sacs. And what do we do here?
Do we eliminate them?
Temporary dead-end streets are not allowed. We got, we did away with those.
Yep, so stop out, cuz unless we have connectivity, uh, but they don't have them anymore.
Is a temporary cul-de-sac allowed?
Yes.
But just a straight dead end not allowed?
And again, I think that's what we require anyway now, would they, we'd make them put a temporary cul-de-sac in, you know, if there's gonna be a future phase. And then, other than that, I'm really just wanting to move the, uh, street right-of-way widths to an appendix, so, um. And then just provide a little bit more clarity, I think that we gave like a range, um for, for lane, for an example, instead of being forty-eight feet, we said forty-eight to fifty-four feet. So, kinda narrowing that down. Alright. Uh, what else did we do? And then on page thirty-five. We're adapting the, uh, ASHTO policy on geometry, geometry, uh, geomet- oh, my goodness. Geometric design of highways and designs, uh, highways and streets, so, you know, we're just adopting those policies as standard. And then I think I had a, page thirty-six. Um, sidewalks shall be ADA compliant. Making sure there's ramps, you know, at all intersections. And then, other than that. I think that was really it, uh. Yeah, then we go into variances, so. Do you have anything else?
No, that's good, thank you very much.
That's good, yeah, yeah.
Um, it's ready.
So what does staff wanna do with this? I mean, table it?
Well, can we, can we go, can we take a little break and go over there, and then we'll come back?
Not to the workshop.
Not to the workshop?
I mean, we probably can, but maybe we'll have people here by then. I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, we can go ahead and decide what we wanna do with this item.
Yep, what do you wanna do with this item? Yeah, this is just discussion.
This is just discussion, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Is it on the agenda, or the?
Yeah, it is discussion, it is discussion.
Okay, the list is discussion there, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's, 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 there are changes, but I don't, I mean, there, I mean, Ron, do you think there's significant changes, like, you know, I mean? I mean, it's, 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 there are changes, but I don't, I mean, there, I mean, Ron, do you think there's significant changes, like, you know, I mean?
Wait, but for
For subdivision.
Well, I'm saying, but our agenda tonight has it on the agenda as
Yep.
Consideration of amendment.
Yep. Yeah, y'all can decide what you wanna do with it.
Okay.
We have, we have to advertise for it, so we just advertise for it.
Sir? What?
We advertise for it.
Okay.
You can table it, you can put it to the next meeting, you can do whatever you want with it. But I'm looking for feedback from the changes that we talked about, are they significant, not significant, were they needed, not needed, what do you think?
I didn't see anything that was, yeah, we need to, yeah, we need to change.
Okay.
Um, need to try to make things
I just think, in my opinion, it's gotta be a more finalized version.
Correct, no, I agree.
Cause I don't know what it looks like, right, so, and I, I, I do feel like just to keep from getting egg on our face, we should get that version to a few stakeholders that are in the community that do that day in and day out to make sure they don't have some suggestion, just to make sure that there may be some things that they point out that conflict or whatever, so.
Yeah, we need a clean version.
Yeah.
But that's for the meeting, so. Um, I mean, if we, if we have time to come back in here, we'll, we'll
Yeah.
Bring the meeting back up and close the meeting at this point.
Alright, we, we can talk about it there.
Meeting adjourned.